Good evening. The time is 6:01 PM. It is Tuesday, November 1st. And I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Flores-Kale?
Here.
Bradshaw? Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
Okay, five members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience to come forward and speak. I do have Diane Herval listed. Ms. Herval, would you like to speak now?
My name is Diane Herval, and I live at 1528 Amberwood Loop here in Kyle. And I came because I can't come to the meeting at 7:00. But I wanted to speak because there's two references on the agenda in regards to the city manager position. And I, as many of you know, I'm a prior council member, and I've been through two hires of city managers, one in 2010 and then, I believe, one in 2015. Anyway, I just wanted to come tonight to give you guys some food for thought, to make sure that you guys understand this is a very important position for the city, in addition to y'all. This position, for an average city manager, I'm sure you all know, is six years. The next six years, you guys look around. I mean, what's on the ground and what's coming, what you've approved, is going to be very interesting, to see how it all spans out, how many citizens are here in the next so many years. And so, I'd just like to employ all of you to make sure that you give this position every ounce of your attention, every ounce of it. In 2010, we did it. We put an RFQ out. We also, we had a headhunter. They brought the five positions, who they thought were the five top. But they brought all the resumes that they received so that we could sift through them and review them to see if there was someone that they may have overlooked. In 2015, we didn't do it that way. We did it where, basically, the council interviewed the top three candidates. And personally, I liked the first way. And the other thing I failed to mention in 2010, we allowed the citizenry to interview who we thought, after the headhunter picked the five, top five, we let the citizenry come through. Well, we picked the top three, and then we let the citizenry interview them. As many of you know, different positions, the Chamber did that same thing. That's how Julie got hired. The City of Buta just recently did it. City of Elgin's done it that way, and several other cities. But this is all about you guys, because you guys are, at the end of the day, are going to make that decision for this particular position, for that particular person, for the next six years. And I think it's going to be very pivotal. And so, I hope, and I just ask, that all of you give it every ounce of attention that you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I will close citizen comments. Next up, executive session.
Pursuant to Chapter 551, the Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071; possible purchase exchange lease or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072; to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purpose, property acquisition; three, personnel matters pursuant to Section 551.074; discussion regarding deliberation, appointment, employment duties, and evaluation of the interim city manager; convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087, Texas Government Code, to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city. Project Rising Phoenix, Project Shamrock.
There was no action taken during executive session. There will be action taken now. I'd like to invite our new Economic Development Director, Ms. Victoria Vargas, up to give a brief presentation on Project Shamrock.
Yes. Victoria Vargas, Director of Economic Development, for the record. Mayor and council, I'd like to ask for you to take action and support Project Shamrock. This is a project we've been working on for many years, and I'm happy to announce that Builders First Source, the nation's largest manufacturer and supplier of building materials, will be relocating to Kyle, Texas. They will be creating 46 new jobs and investing $16 million capital investment into their building, and very, very happy to also report that they will be the city's largest sales tax-paying entity going forward, so.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores-Kale, we approve the economic development incentive for Project Shamrock. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. I'll let the tapes roll over. Tapes. And then, we'll start our meeting. Figure of speech. All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:04 PM. It is Tuesday, November 1st, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Flores-Kale?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for city council's special meeting, October 18th, and regular meeting on the same day, October 18th, 2022.
Motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Flores-Kale, we approve the minutes. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I do have three who have registered to speak. First up, Ms. Evangelina Chapa.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Thank you. I was kind of disappointed on last week's, the last meeting that y'all had, in discussing about the Kyle Police Department sign, that it was so hard for y'all to decide whether to have it or not to have it. And I just want to recall the previous years that we had, that there was discussion about a new city hall that was going to be planned at Uptown Kyle. And the people were very disappointed. They said if anybody should have a building, would be the Kyle Police Department. And we felt that that was the most important thing. And I just couldn't figure out why y'all were having such a difficult time, because that was the main thing that the people were concerned about, is the police department. When it was finally allowed that we were going to have a Kyle Police Department, somehow it got into the Kyle Safety Center, and then also staff included in that. In my opinion, that's my opinion, that the Kyle should have their own building was the main thing. But somehow, in the bond, it got clustered there with three different things, and I just feel like the Kyle Police Department should have had their own building. Thank you, that's just me.
All right, thank you. Next up is Michelle Jean-Marie.
Hi, good evening. That's Michelle Jean-Marie. I am a resident and owner of a house in the Amberwood subdivision, and exit 217 is very dear to me. Exit 217 going north. I don't understand with the growth of the city, why it was closed off, and why it was the new exit by Firestone. Yes, it is a much beautiful exit on ramp, rather, and it allows for a better flow of traffic. However, closing off 217 made no sense to me, when Costco is on the rise, when so many homes are on Windy Hill. They're forced to get off so early back at Firestone. They're on their own ramp for so long, for over a mile. Do they make a ride at Windy Hill? No, they cut through the Amberwood subdivision. I have been, I have not been able to back out of my own driveway, because they're cutting through my subdivision to get onto Windy Hill by Cherrywood. And then, there has been, there have been many accidents on the thoroughfare, that's Amberwood Loop. And I'd like that we consider reopening exit 217 north. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dan LaPage.
Dan LaPage here. Been here since '99. I have a concern with, just recently, with the voting. Seems to me, I'm not one to get out an awful lot to see different kinds of media, but nonetheless, it seems to me that improvements have to be made for all the folks that are running for local, county, city, some kind of information to be put out there before voting times arise, giving us information on the individuals, some specifics. I'm not sure exactly what specifics, but to give us a history of the people, you know, what their ideas are, how they can contribute, so people can have a fair assessment of who they're voting for. When I voted, I didn't do any local voting, because I didn't know anyone. So, there's, I'm sure there's many ways, for one, possibly having any candidate put something together that can be put on the website, the city website, perhaps having a setup in all of the voting places that have their information there, so someone can take a few minutes to read and know who they're voting for. That's just a suggestion, but perhaps I can maybe email some more ideas to someone, you know, that makes decisions, so. That's about it. Real simple. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Sylvia Gallo.
Hello, thank you. My name is Sylvia Gallo. I am a resident, business owner, and activist for east side development. Today, I come with the same concerns as her, the second lady. I'm also an Amberwood, Amberwood resident. Also, I have the same issue with backing up, and we knew that problem was going to be happening when we moved there, because it's a principal street. But we do have that situation, not only on our exit, but also Yarrenton exit. If we're looking for east side growth, we need to address that issue of Yarrenton exit. Somehow, back in 2010, that tech stopped avoided for those red incidents at that apartment complex. They got bypassed, and they just took away that exit. We have to address these issues. We are growing. We are expanding way before our time. We saw this issue in 2010. If we are going to be a destination city, we need to address this. We need to address it now. Tech stock can work with us. I do highway and civil projects. I know there's a possibility of working this. Because I want to do east side development, I want to see Kyle as a destination city for parks and recreational, for sports, has been the vision way back when Kerry was here, when I sat with him, when I first invested in buying a home and invested into the city. That was a thing that Kerry and I sat together, visualizing that visual of making Kyle a destination for sports and rec. Today, I come to you again, pleading with you. I am here because I have so many investors wanting to come and invest here in Kyle, Texas, our little city that has become, it's a neighborhood city, but it wants the recognition for sports. I brought in people from Mexico to invest here. I don't know how else to get your all's attention. We can be the destination for sports and recreational. We have to address these issues with these exits for east side. The growth is in east side. Tech stock is growing 21. Let's focus on that as well. The focus that you all have done on the other side has been great, but the expansion that's happening in the east side, it's going to come before you know it. It hasn't been addressed in, I guess, going 15 years? Addressing the stop sign with Lehman High School, it was the beginning of the whole development of the east side. Those four-way stops, the chicken, playing chicken on the streets before Seton came. I came with all that growth. Therefore, I see this growth. So, I plead with you all. Let's look at these, this Kyle as a destination city, and look at people like residents that are not only speaking out, but are actually investing of our own money, our own resources, and our own time to come and help Kyle grow. We need your support to make that difference. I plead with you. Back me up. I have investors willing to throw money here in our local community for our people that you all represent. So, please, support sports and recreation for east side development, is my plea with you today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sylvia. That's all the forms that I have that are filled out. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up is agenda order. Does anyone have a request to move any of the items around? All right, seeing none, we're going to move to the Arbor Day proclamation. Mayor Pro Tim Rizzo.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council proclamation. Is my mic working? Can y'all hear me? Okay, sounds good. I'm not hearing, maybe my allergies. Okay. City Council proclamation, whereas the City of Kyle is committed to maintain its natural trees and resources, demonstrated by the city council's constant support of beautification projects, and whereas trees in our community provide increased property values, beautify our community, clean the air we breathe, moderate temperatures, and produce oxygen. And whereas, the Kyle Parks and Recreation Department has planted 25 trees in 2022, and whereas, the City of Kyle will observe Texas Arbor Day by planting 52 trees at Lake Kyle Park. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Kyle City Council and the City Council of the City of Kyle, Texas, does hereby recognize Texas Arbor Day in the City of Kyle, November 4th, 2022. Signed on this date. I just want to say, Mariana, thank you for the proclamation. As a city, we have done everything we can moving forward to try to protect a lot of our beautiful trees, our historic trees as well, and showing our constant willingness to want to plant more trees is something that we really look forward to. So, I want to thank the Parks Department, the Parks Board, and everyone that participates in these events, also the Great River Cleanup as well, which helps preserve a lot of our natural resources. Mariana, would you like to come up and say something? I recognize the board, please.
Just really briefly, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Department Director. We would like to thank the mayor and council for support of the Arbor Day event. This is really exciting for us, because it's our first year having an outdoor nature program specialist that council approved in the last budget year. And having the outdoor nature specialist, she's been able to program over 25 brand-new outdoor nature events in just one year. And so, this proclamation is really the work of our outdoor nature specialist, Stacy Anderson, who is here today and with the support of the Parks Board. So, when drought season dies down and we're able to get those trees planted, we'll be putting 52 trees out at Lake Kyle. And we want to thank you for the support.
Can we get a picture, please?
All right, if we can get everyone kind of centered. Not everyone doing on the side. All right, can we move in just a little bit? Sorry. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. Perfect.
Anybody have anything to add on that item? Okay, we're going to, we're going to move forward to agenda item number five, presentation on findings from surveying five communities in Kyle and tornado rebate program. Mr. William Paez Tabash.
Good evening. Will Paez Tabash, for the record. I had sent a presentation ahead of time, which I'm hoping to see on one of these meetings. Well, while we wait, I did leave a copy of the written report.
Is your mic on? Can you see if your mic's on? Can't hear you.
It's green. Hello?
Yeah, the mics are a little, they're a little quiet.
Not really.
Go for it.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay, uncomfortably close, got it. While the presentation comes up, in front of you, and Councilmember Bradshaw, I will send an email, because I didn't realize you'd be virtual. There's a paper copy of the survey itself, as well as my write-up of the results, and then this is the presentation. So, I had to go to, as listed here, five different communities, Quail Ridge, Aztec Ridge, Lakeside, Tenori on Sunset. Aztec is now called Hidden Trails. So, on the basis of a citizen comment, and I want to say April or May, citizen comment came up and asked about tornadic activity and safety features that we can implement as a city for them. I was directed to conduct a fact-finding mission into these neighborhoods to determine what the sentiment is about this tornado rebate program. And that's what you have in front of you. Now, I've modeled the rebate program itself after existing FEMA programs. They require a number of things, like existing permits, it has to meet ICC 550 requirements, and it has a maximum cap of 50% of the cost of a shelter. I had called down to San Antonio. There is a firm that says they will install a shelter for $10,000, so I made the cap $5,000. All fairly standard, I believe. Now, these are the communities visited and the response counts. Sunset Ridge is overrepresented, because, believe it or not, I was asked to leave. There's a no soliciting policy for the community, and the management said, "Well, you know, you are soliciting, but we'll send out your survey via email to our residents." And so, they did, and I got a pretty good response back. Same thing happened at Lakeside, so they are underrepresented for the size, but I had no email responses back to the survey from that community. So, I don't know if it was disseminated or just got filtered out. Now, the basic question of, does anyone want a shelter? Yes, overwhelmingly of the 70-something responses we have, 50 just said yes. Hypothetically, if I could just have one, awesome, I would have one. Would I pay for one was a much different question. I only disclose the $10,000 cost if somebody asks, because that's not necessarily what the cost will be. I imagine it will be different based on how much it costs to get a permit from the city, how much work the contractor's going to have to do come up from San Antonio, or if they go to Austin instead, or if there's another provider locally that I just couldn't find. The overwhelming response was no, and then maybe, and then yes was a pretty small sliver. Now, if the city offered a rebate, we did see the yeses go up to about 25. So, about a third of respondents would say yes, a third would say no, and then a third would say maybe. The negative response was higher than I thought it would be, but it's still about equal to the yeses. Now, as for the question of why haven't, haven't they built a shelter, I gave a few options. The overwhelming ones are cost, and they just didn't know that they could. A number of these communities have rented property, so it would be an issue to try and install something on a property that they don't, they don't own themselves. There was a recurring theme of, I don't want to improve a property that I don't actually own and intend to leave, if that makes sense. So, an information session was another thing that was raised. I asked, would you want one locally in your community or one at city hall? I was surprised to find out that actually, the majority wanted at city hall. They would prefer to attend an information session here. I don't have one planned yet. However, I have reached out to the Fire Marshal and National Weather Service, and they said whenever we have the go-ahead, they're happy to come out here and deliver an information session about tornado safety and what you can do. And I believe that is about everything. Do you all have any questions for me?
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Flores-Kale?
Thank you. All right, so I got really excited when you said that you had sent out to Sunset Ridge that email.
I have not. The management did.
Okay, there you go. That's what I'm looking for. So, what can we do? And I know you said you sent it out to, what was the other one?
It was supposed to go to Lakeside after they asked me to leave for the same reason, but I don't know that anyone got that email.
I don't know if it's really soliciting if you're with the city, but, so my question is, A, can we follow up? So, like, you send the email, and then you follow up to make sure it didn't go to spam. Lots of times when I send emails from like a DocuSign, even though it's a legit, like, website, it oftentimes goes into spam. So, instead of going out to each of them, maybe we get in contact with their HOA? And then, another solution could possibly be one big building that the city builds in, in coordination with their HOA. So, for me, it's all about public safety, and I agree. Just because you rent your home, though, that doesn't mean that should deter you from being safe, right? So, if we could work the city and the HOA together to, like, build some kind of...
So, Will Atkinson is here, and we had discussed an option to approach it from an ordinance side. To the first part, only three of these communities had anything resembling an HOA. One of my visits resulted in a call to code enforcement about their lax HOA. I won't disclose which one, but I can, I can tell you afterwards. But from an ordinance side, we did talk, I did talk to Will Atkinson. We could, in future developments, ask that, because HOA amenities are required for communities of a certain size, the facility that would house these amenities, whether it's some sort of outbuilding, restrooms, whatever, can be hardened against weather, and that would provide some semblance of a community shelter. Now, if we were to build like the old FEMA domes at the city's expense, FEMA no longer recommends those for one, because they're just too hard to access in the short timeframe of a tornado, and two, we would have to absorb all of that cost. So, they're less effective and more costly. And then, once we build them, we have to make, maintain them, make sure nobody's like squatting in them, nobody's disusing them or damaging them. It becomes an endless cost.
Okay, so, going forward, I think that ordinance would be a great idea. Unfortunately, there's already subdivisions that are here, and the city's already approved them. And so, I think at some point, there is going to be a little bit of cost onto the city. When I say a little, I mean a lot. But for me, I feel like you can't put a cost on safety, and so, we're not looking at, like, adding baseball fields or parks. We're talking about, like, people's lives, and so, and I get it, it's kind of frustrating because it's not, it's not like an every-year event, but even if it's just one every five years, it's still a concern to me. So, I think if we could get staff to discuss, you know, which, which ones are already here, which ones would not be willing to, like, do it at all, maybe send out some kind of correspondence, trying to just work collectively. I would like to think that some of these subdivisions would be willing to at least pay for half of the cost if it meant keeping their residents safe. But I, overall, I liked, I liked the report. I appreciate it. Again, if we could try to work with the HOAs, or even, you know, some of the subdivisions, I feel like, again, we're going to eat some of this cost. So, I'm okay with it. As a council member, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, this is reach out to the HOAs about a community shelter, or do you want me to resubmit a survey to the three?
Both. Like, can, can we, yeah, can we resubmit, one, so they know that you're not selling satellites for the top of their house? And then, two, you know... And then, two, you know, for one, I think that's good that the residents will see that the city is trying to reach out in a different way. And then also, on a different note, if they would be, if the HOAs would be willing to work collectively with us to try to get some safety over there.
Okay, I have those two notes.
Mayor Pretten.
Yeah, just real quick, William. So I've got a little issue that they wouldn't allow you to go by as a representative of the city to the communities. I can understand if you were a cable salesman or something like that. You're actually a representative of the city, so I don't know. Is there something that prohibits us from doing that, Jerry? But I just, I just find it kind of odd that they wouldn't allow a representative of the city to come forward, because we're not really trying to sell anything, we're trying to get information from the communities. The other thing is, when we're looking at communities, make sure we get size, so we can look at the size of, the scope of, the type of building we're looking at, because different, subdivisions are different sizes. So something I would like to know is the numbers as well of what we're looking to house in case on an event. And then, that's pretty much it. Sounds good. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, William.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is Agenda Item Number Six, City Manager's Report. Mr. Hendricks.
Mayor, Council, I'd like to bring up first our Assistant City Manager, Amber Lewis, to give an update on her city manager professional recruitment efforts.
Good evening. Wait for that to pop up. At the direction of council, city staff created and had published a request for proposals for recruitment services. Those proposals are due Thursday, this Thursday, November 3rd at 4:00 PM. From there, city staff will review the proposals, and we will select the top two firms that best fulfill the city's requirements and represent the best values to the city. And then, at the next meeting, either a special-called meeting, or it could be at the next regular meeting of the city council, which is November 15th. Those top two firms will provide an in-depth presentation to you all. And at that meeting, we would be asking for the authority for the city manager to, the interim city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for services. And then, going forward, we would, you all would be involved in the timeline of the placement of the next city manager.
Amber, I'm gonna just interrupt for a second and ask the council if there would be any objection to scheduling a special meeting for... Well, I was gonna say November 8th, but I'm realizing that's election. That's next Tuesday. How about Thursday, November 10th? Maybe at 6 o'clock?
I'm available.
I don't have to check back, but I think I'm free that night.
Councilmember Bradshaw, would that work for you? Okay, would you prefer six, five, or seven? Six?
Well, we have, well, that election, I guess when, if something... I'm not saying he's not gonna be here. I'm saying is, he's, are we gonna, will we have a new council member at that point? If something, if for some reason...
No.
Because Election Day is the 8th, right?
Right, canvassing of the election will occur on the 15th.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it should be fine either way. All right, so we will schedule a meeting, Jennifer, for 6 o'clock on the 10th. Is that gonna be okay with staff? I think it'll be a skeleton crew that'll be needed there. And interviewing the firms will be the only agenda item. Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to ask Will Atkinson, our Planning Director, to give an update on our comprehensive plan at our downtown master plan.
Good evening, Will Atkinson for the record, Planning Director. As Jerry just stated, we have a couple of updates. So last week, we kicked off our comprehensive plan, public outreach. For the four events that we did total between Wednesday and Thursday of last week, we had about 200 respondents from the citizens of the city of Kyle. We passed out around, between staff and the Verduni group, we passed out around over, over 800 little cards, so you can scan the card and do the survey online. They went to several businesses around town, several in downtown, some around the 1626 area. And we are also working with the, with the Communications Department to make sure that we're also working to get the word out continuously moving forward also. We also have a couple of dates set for staff to attend events here in Kyle to move over the next couple of months for the comprehensive plan as well. We're gonna be going to the Veterans Day Parade event, and we're also gonna be going to Santa's Arrival with a booth as well. And there's probably gonna be a few more events in between all that as well. We haven't quite put a, put a, in detail where we're gonna attend on those. But we're, we're spreading the word. And we got some money elsewhere in our budget to also print some flyers and what have you as well, that we're gonna be moving, so... Any questions on the comp plan?
I do want to make a comment that I heard positive feedback of the event to be hosted at the Cruck Center, because some people didn't even know that it was happening, and they just walked in and then gave the, you know, their thoughts on, on the comprehensive plan. So I don't know how many more we're gonna have like that, but I think it was a, it was an easy go-in and go-out, leave your, your thoughts and go-back-home kind of event. So I, I thought it was well done.
Mayor Pretten.
And I just want to add to that, yeah, definitely well-done, but also want to add to that, that there is a QR code that citizens can go online and scan and fill out the survey as well. This is something that the citizens have always asked for, is to see what direction the city is at. Here's their chance to give the input that they've desperately wanted to give us, not just on social media, but also in, on forum, where they actually make a difference. So I'm encouraging all the citizens to come out and fill this QR code, scan it, fill out the survey, and give us your feedback. Let's see what direction the citizens really want to go with the city of Kyle. And this is your opportunity. I promise you, you're not wasting your time.
All right, thank you, Will. Oh, Councilmember Foresca.
Thank you. Okay, so I did get a little bit of feedback. One of them is suggesting that maybe we partner with the HOAs and allow the people to visit the different neighborhoods. And the other one, I'm just gonna read this if that's okay. It says, "In regards to the survey, I can share general feedback on getting reliable statistic data when the surveyors are not subject matter experts, and all questions are required to be answered. You'll want to add an 'I'm not sure' option. Otherwise, the data you get is skewed by people guessing about the stuff they don't know. If you have residents with children asked about school's performance, or retail workers asked about entrepreneurship, they're forced to blindly choose a number, which will always skew your data and make it unreliable." And then my other suggestion would be to put the scan codes like online, maybe, so we can repost it on our Facebooks. And that's it. I'm excited about the comprehensive plan, so thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely, and one last thing. And also, so you all are aware, we're gonna be, we've already put in the newspaper for three public hearings to adopt the downtown master plan coming up. And we're also gonna be coordinating with the Communications Department on getting the word on, on that as well. They're gonna be on Thursday, November the 17th, Tuesday, November the 29th, for public, or for P&amp;Z for both of those meetings. And then we have one public hearing on Tuesday, December 6th, for, to see y'all at City Council with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Mariana Espinoza, our Parks Director, up.
Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. Just a reminder that next Saturday, we have the Veterans Day Parade. It will start at Greg Clark Park, and it will go down Center Street and finish at City Square Park. It's also the same day as our Market Day. So Market Day will be going on from 9 to 2, and then the parade will start at noon. And then, mark your calendars for December, because we are less than a month away, actually, a couple of weeks away, from the Holiday Lights, Aunt Mary Colle-Hartson City Square Park, and Santa's Arrival with the lighting of the Christmas tree. The event will take place on Thursday, December 1st, from 4 to 9. Choirs from the area schools will sing, from elementary, middle school, and high school. We have a couple performances by youth groups. And then at about 6:30 PM, Santa will arrive, and we will turn on the lights to the Christmas tree in the park. And then every day until Christmas Day, the lights will be on. The lights will actually be on till the first Monday in January, but programming will take place the first 25 days. And our calendar is on cityofkyle.com/recreation. So for example, on Mondays, we have Music in the Park Mondays. On Wednesday, we have Winter Wonderland Wednesdays. And then filled in with different opportunities during the week, like pictures with Santa, both free and pay opportunities.
Time's sure is flying. I can't believe we're already back there again. Crazy. Mayor Pretten.
Yeah, just real quick, Mariana, I did reach out to my resident asking if we could have mariachi's there, could, for the lighting of the Christmas tree. They were wondering if, you know, we could make it inclusive.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get with staff and see if we can add some...
The schedule of performances is not finalized yet, so I'll see what we can do for sure.
That would be great. Thank you, Mariana.
Are the schools gonna be there too? Like, if you want mariachi, layman would be a great option to...
Usually, annually, most of all the elementary, middle, and high school choirs perform, but we can reach out to all the mariachi groups.
Thank you.
And then, December 13th, 14th, and 15th, Santa will be riding around town with the Parks Department, the Police Department, and if possible, the Fire Department. On the 13th, they will be going to the northeast part of town. On the 14th, the southeast part of town. And on the 15th, the west side of town. And that's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mariana. Next up, Kara Waits, our Interim Director of Library Services.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm happy to announce we have our Food for Fines underway. It began on Monday, and it'll run through Friday, November 12th. You can redeem cans and prepackaged foods, canned goods, juices even. They're requesting certain things. It is posted on our website and Facebook page. And you get $2 off your fines, late fees only. And, or if you'd just like to donate, we'd welcome any donations. And then this Saturday, November 5th, from, I believe it's 10 to 12:30, we have Ahsoka. We're having Paws for Reading. And so you can bring your kids, you can come and listen to a story yourself, or bring your grandkids if you wish, and read to the dog. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, for the record, Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager. Tonight's a good news, bad news kind of night, and I always like to start with the bad news. The bad news is our management analyst, David Amser, is leaving us. David is here, if David wants to come up. David's only been here since May, but he's done a couple of years' worth of work since he's been here. He's helped streamline a lot of our processes. He's been involved in just about everything Amber and I do. And with the departure of our city manager and other assistant city manager, David's really stepped in to fill a lot of that gap. And where'd he go? And I know he's on his way to becoming a city manager, so... And he was very instrumental in helping us hire the people I'm about to introduce to you. So David, if you want to come up, I want to say thank you for all you've done. Good luck. By the way, he's gonna be the assistant to the city manager in Hutto, and I think I know, you know who that is. So, David.
I'll be brief, just like my time here. I did want to just say that the city of Kyle is in really good hands. Something I've said in a lot of interviews, and Amber, even our communications director, will know this, is you guys preach something called Team Kyle. And I've told a lot of applicants that that's actually true. I've worked in the private sector for 10 years, as well as several cities, and it's usually not. And that's the one thing I'm gonna miss the most. It's just, this is the job I've been wanting since I got my MPA, and it's too hard to pass up. And I appreciate you guys welcoming me with open arms, and you guys are in good hands, and the people Jerry's about to introduce is, is gonna take Kyle to the next level. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Partially.
I do have to say something, because I had the pleasure of getting to know you better when we went to the TMA conference about a couple of weeks ago. And I was so excited. I think I immediately told Amber, "He is amazing. He is just so good, so dedicated. You can tell the love that he has for his job, but I knew that you were not gonna stay there for too long, because I could see that potential." So I'm gonna have a chat with James Earp, because it's not fair what he's doing, but anyway, I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Yeah, David, I just want to tell you, it was great having you here. But we see that we can't keep you forever. You're definitely moving up, and we wish you all the best. It's great getting to know you, and I know that you've got great things ahead of you. You're gonna do great things in your profession as well, so just all the best.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know what to say here. I'm a little, I'm a little upset with you.
That's fair. It's totally fair.
I've, I've enjoyed getting to know you through the months as well. You're somebody who has just an incredible amount of vision for yourself, for the job that you have, and for the city that you serve. And so, Hutto's blessed to have you. And so, just best of luck now and always. You're gonna do great. I believe that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Councilmember Foresca.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming, and I know you'll be in good hands, and so I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
All right.
Good luck, sir.
Thanks.
All right, next up, I want to introduce you to Allison Kelly. Allison? Allison comes to us from, Allison's our new communications manager. Today's her first day. Allison comes to us as a news producer from KXAN. So some of you may be familiar with her work. She, she's also served as a Communication Director for Home State's Legislature in North Dakota. And she has a Bachelor of Arts degree in Communications from the University of North Dakota. And my brief experience getting to know her was on the interview panel where she presented her visions to us. And I talk about elevating a department. Allison completely fills out all the open positions in our Communications Department. And we have a lot of up to go to with Allison on our team. I'm very proud to introduce you to you, Allison.
Just want to thank you all for the opportunity. Don't have a lot to say, do have a lot to learn, and looking forward to working with Rachel.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, there's more. I'd like to introduce you to Claudia Rocha, who's our new Special Event Manager with the Parks and Recreation Department. Claudia has been with the city of Austin for 25 years as a program coordinator, manager, facility manager. She's done it all, and having come from the city of Austin myself, I know that that department and the people in it work very, very hard. She has a bachelor's degree in recreational administration from Texas State University, right down the road. She's gonna be in charge of things like our Pie in the Sky, our upcoming Extravaganza, and Fourth of July, and many, many other things. I'd like to introduce you to Claudia Rocha. Everybody keeps this period on.
I've, I've been a longtime adult resident here in Kyle, and I'm so glad to come back and be able to give back to it. So I've done my time in Austin, so I'm super excited about being able to work here and give my time to where I live, so thank you.
Awesome. Fantastic. Thank you.
Moving on, I'd like to introduce you to Colleen Turney. Colleen is our next Director of Library Services. Very excited to introduce you to Colleen. Not only is she a Kyle resident, she's a former library director for Nagley Elementary, and she comes from Hutto. Colleen?
Mayor, City Council, it's so nice to be here to meet all of you and all of you. I have been working with James Earp for a few months, and was very nervous about telling him that I was gonna be here. But he speaks so highly of all of you, and I am very, very excited about working in the Kyle Library and to be working in the community that I live in. And I'm looking forward to extending and continuing the fabulous programming and library services that the Kyle Library has, and looking forward to partnering with all the city staff and council to make the library amazing, even more amazing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen's exercise, by the way, was a presentation on her vision of the library of the future. of the future in Kyle. And we have some great things coming our way in our library. And I want to thank also Kara for doing such an outstanding job of once again guiding our library through a transition. And can't tell you how much I appreciate her. The next face is gonna be familiar with you. I'd like to bring up Marco Forte. Don't disappear on me, Marco. So Marco's been with the city since 2014, and I'd like to take credit for hiring him. And I will, because I did. And I've watched Marco grow through the years, and he's worked his way up through all the different parts for IT. A lot of the things that we use every day is here directly in part for Marco's efforts. And he nailed his interview and his presentation. And I'm very proud to introduce Marco as our next Director of IT in the City of Kyle.
Thank you, Jerry. I don't know where you guys got that picture from, but I gotta update my picture. No, but I am truly honored and excited for the opportunity to be the Director of Information Technology. For the past nine years, I have worked under amazing leadership, and I've seen and grown and evaluated what it takes to be a good leader. And for the past nine years, together, we've built a strong, solid foundation for the Information Technology Department. And so my intention is to build off that foundation, to bring sustainability, innovation to the city, and to move the city forward. So I'm really excited to work individually closely with all you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Marco.
So I've got a better picture of Marco during the fire here next door. Marco and Matt, I've got a picture of them, their dedication. They're outside. They put up a makeshift workstation right outside the window, and we're keeping the city online and making sure that the residents had all the information they needed. So definitely a dedicated employee. So thank you, Marco.
Thank you.
Last and certainly not least, I'd like to bring Victoria Vargas up. Victoria was serving as our Interim Director of Economic Development for, what, since May, June? Has been doing an outstanding job. And she went up against some pretty tough competition in her interview process, but she prevailed. And I'm very proud to introduce Victoria as our next Director of Economic Development. And also say that there are no more interim Directors in the City of Kyle.
Nice.
Victoria.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's been a pleasure to be working here for 14 years. I interviewed with the city about this time 14 years ago, and I was asked by Sandra Duran why I wanted to work here. And I told her that I wanted to make a difference in the city that I lived in and where I raised my family. And I truly feel that's the same way I feel today. After 14 years of being here, we've built a solid economic development department, and I just want to continue to keep that going and offer gold standard development to the city and service to our residents. So, thank you. It's truly an honor to be the Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like that almost everything that's come into the city in the past decade and a half has been in large part due to Victoria and her efforts with the Economic Development Team. And we have a lot of great things in store for us with Victoria at the helm. So I don't have any more new hires to introduce to you tonight, but I will assure you that there are even more in the pipeline, and I can't wait to introduce to you those results at future meetings. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Okay. Next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Robert, City Mayor. On the right side, I asked you if projects had to be completed, so that's the most I can... Stay today on mine, Steph. La Reta Park is 75% complete. They're preparing to relocate the lift station, and they're also preparing for the installation of the place surface out there. They did slip on the date for completion. It's now early December of 2022. Public Safety Center, we're at 67% complete. Their ballistic wall panels are being installed. They're installing piers for the canopy. The mechanical units are being tied in. Wires are being pulled through the panels for the various locations. And their completion date has also slipped a little bit. It's early March of 2023. Wastewater Treatment Expansion Plant, as you know, the project that we have left there is to finish the roads in the dewatering facility. We're at 98% complete. They've been working that bullseye plant number one. Just to let you know, I asked a question about why we had more problems with that bullseye plant one, but that was the very first plant that was installed out there. So it's much older. It's over 20 years old, I understand. So we're finding a lot of corrosion inside that plant. We also lost some time on this one due to supply chain delays. The feed pump and the motor control panels are delayed, being delayed. We can't get those yet. PEC is out there getting the power to the... So we can energize the transformers out there. And they're continuing to work on the roads. We're also installing security fencing out there. And there's Consent Agenda Item Number 10 that we'll talk about a little bit later. South Side Wastewater Improvements Project, we're about 94% complete. They're inspecting the water lines right now. And as they're going along, they're also co-kneels manholes. That's the last step in the process for this wastewater line. We're also getting ready to do some repairs on TexDOT's Frontage Road. And we're gonna try to start up the South Side Lift Station. Got postponed last week because of weather. And there's a Consent Agenda Item Number 11 that's related to that, and I'll get to that in a little bit. Elliott Ranch Interceptor, we're at 84%. We're still having some road closures. We're starting to clean up the area to try to get it wrapped up. Sledge Street Reconstruction continues between J. Marias Lane and Third Street. They're installing ribbon curb and driveways are being placed also. And we're still getting some residents that have issues, and we're trying to respond as quickly as we can. And there's some of the pictures showing some of the construction that's going on. The downtown relocation of overhead lines, we still have Spectrum and Frontier that we need to have relocated. Spectrum right now is waiting for permission from PEC to go ahead and attach onto the poles that we've approved. Frontier is also placing lines in their underground conduit, and they're also placing some equipment on the approved poles.
Leon, so is it safe to say that the poles won't be taken down by Christmas?
That's our goal.
Okay.
Old Post Road, they did a little bit of work on this week, past week, but they were delayed by the rain a little bit. They still have some patching that needs to do at the south end of the project. They have placed the first layer of asphalt at four inches of base hot mix. We have a two-inch layer that's still left to be placed on that road. We still have some drainage in front of the lard concrete that we need to wrap up, and we have three driveways that we need to place. Unofficially, Council, the road is open. We're gonna try to finish that work up and do the work with lane closures. Indian Paint Brush Lift Station, we're at about 13% complete. They placed the exterior walls forms. We did pipe bursting on this project. It was the first time for the city that's been completed. And the bypass pumps have been removed. So this project's moving along very well. Center Street Village, we just started this project. I showed you maps to show you where this particular line's gonna be placed. We're gonna be upsizing that particular 18-inch line up to a 24-inch line. And right now, they're working on installing the bypass pumping. But if you can see where it starts, it starts right behind the Sonic and then heads up towards Hill Street and goes to the north side. This is Phase One. Consent Agenda Item Number 10, this is $98,000 for Professional Engineering Services to Black and Veatch. Because of the delay in the project and the extra work that was required with the dewatering facility, they've asked for additional funding to pay for their construction management and their inspections on that project. On Number 11, that's for about $150,000. That's for the stabilized sand that we needed to place back in the trench when we were cutting in front of the Edwards Drive project. Some of the pictures that I showed you before showed how the trench was collapsing in there. And we wanted to make sure that what we put back was in good condition, that we didn't have any problems with that trench when we backfilled it. TexDOT also asked us to do additional paving there on that section of the Frontage Road. Consent Agenda Item Number 12, this is $25,000 for the engineering services that's required by Union Pacific Railroad. They have a third-party firm by the name of Benesh who will be reviewing our plans as we submit them. And this is probably the first step of the review for that particular project. Consent Agenda Item Number 13 is related. We asked for additional aesthetics to be placed on that particular bridge, that proposed bridge that's gonna go over Coles Crossing. And the request is for $165,000 from the county to pay for that extra design that we need to do to add those aesthetic features. We're actually gonna widen the shared use path there from eight feet to 10 feet. And any questions?
Any questions for Leon? Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. And Agenda Item Number 10, so what's exactly this cup of work that the additional construction management services is gonna have? Because I see it's like 550 hours, which adds to like that almost $100,000. And why have we not planned on that before? Or what exactly are they gonna do?
We did not have the dewatering facility in the project initially. And by change order, we added the dewatering facility. So that's what's extended the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is our Consent Agendas. Is there anyone who has any items they wish to pull? Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 8 through 17.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kales. There's discussion on the motion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. All right. Next up is Agenda Item Number 18. Approve an agreement between the City of Kyle and Judge Andrew Cable for providing municipal court judge services for a two-year period to expire on October 31st, 2024 at a fixed fee of $3,110 per month. Mr. Mohit.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers, for the record, I'm Prevez Mohit, City's Director of Finance. As you may recall, we have three positions in the city that are not employee positions. They are contract for professional services. We have the Municipal Court Judge, the City Prosecutor, and the City Attorney. Those are the three contracted professionals. Under Agenda Item Number 18, staff is requesting council's consideration and approval of an agreement between the City of Kyle and Judge Andrew Cable to provide judge services for the city's municipal court. The initial term of this agreement is for a two-year period beginning November 1, 2022, and to end October 31st, 2024. After the initial two-year term, the agreement may automatically renew for an additional two-year term in accordance with Chapter 29 of the Texas Local Government Code. The fixed monthly fee, as recommended by staff, is $3,110 per month, which is a 15% increase from the previous agreement. A copy of the new agreement is provided in your agenda packet. Judge Cable is here with us this evening. Should you have any questions or comments for him? And Council, that concludes my overall review of Agenda Item 18. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mohit. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Parsley.
Can I make a motion to approve Item 18?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kales. There's discussion on the motion. Councilmember Floris Kales.
If I could just say a few words to Judge Cable.
Please.
We have briefly met a couple times, but I just want to say thank you for your willingness to stay with the city of Kyle. As much as our town is growing, I appreciate having the consistency of you being here. And so I just wanted to say thank you personally.
That means a lot to me. It's an honor for me to serve in this capacity. And I tell you, I serve in this capacity in two other jurisdictions. And very rarely does the council put that much resource and staff. And Mr. Mohit has put together a team that is able to grow and to do it in a way that keeps consistency and puts the citizen first. And it allows me to do that, too, put the citizen first. And that's not always the case when it comes to courts.
I appreciate that. And I also wanted to make sure that, you know, Mr. Perez was great to give me additional information. And so I wanted to make sure you are also fairly compensated. And so when I found out you made 15% extra, I was like, let's take five of that back. I'm just kidding. I'm glad to know that we are at least increasing a little bit as we go. So again, I want to say thank you.
Thank y'all for the opportunity to serve, and it really means a lot to me. It does. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Good judge.
I might just add, this is my, I think, third contract to vote on. And the reason I'm always heartily in support is because in our community survey, our library and our municipal court are always in contention for the most positively reported on by the community. I believe our court is always in the 90 percentile in terms of approval and satisfaction. For a court to get that kind of a high number means they were doing something well. And without doubt, that's because of your leadership, Mr. Cable. So I just appreciate you.
It's the staff, for sure.
We have a good team. Anyone else? Councilmember Tobias.
Yes, thank you, Judge, for everything you do. I work at the county, and I've dealt with lots of magistrations judges before. And I understand the length and the hard work that you have, the long hours that you gotta go through as well. And I see that this past year, you had over 7,000 cases on average.
Probably so.
Yeah, to look at and go through. But serving the community, we really appreciate your hard work on that.
I like being here very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank y'all very, very much.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next up, Agenda Item Number 19. Discussion on Possible Action to Install Pet Waste Stations at Heroes Memorial Park. Slippery rocks signed by the waterfall and additional trash can by the Peace Garden. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. So I go to the park about twice a week, walk in, and I did notice that, you know, people go with their pets, and there's no pet stations. So the last thing I want to see is the park full of dog waste. So I would like to request for, I don't know if the staff can, two pet waste stations. I believe there is another trash can needed by the peace garden, because I know the ones we have are in the entrances, and I saw a couple of trash accumulated in that area. And I don't know if people just don't notice where the trash cans are, but if we had one located in there, that would be perfect. And I saw online discussion about kids getting in the water, which they can do, but I would like to make sure that they know that the rocks are slippery. So if we can put a sign like the cute snake signs that we have out there, something like that that says that the rocks are slippery, be careful. That'd be awesome. So, I don't know.
We already have a plan for each of those things. Just like to state for the record, though, it is not okay to swim in the pond.
No.
No, but they do get their feet wet on the lawn.
And Marianna can go over what she has, if you would like for her to.
And so to be clear, the area I think you're talking about is the actual waterfall.
Yes, just the waterfall.
And it's designed where you can walk right up to where that is, but because of the way it's configured, it does get extremely slippery there. So I think a sign would be very appropriate.
And just in preparation of tonight's Agenda Item, the Parks and Recreation Department has prepared cost estimates. And to get all those items completed, it'd be about $2,700, which we are able to do, and we're ready to get put in.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to install the signs as discussed.
Thank you. Second.
All right. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. And to be clear, signs, et cetera, as outlined, including the trash can and dog station.
Trash can, signs, and pet waste.
I have discussion.
Correct, yes. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes, I have discussion. Marianna, let's make sure that we get with the VFW and make sure we don't put anything anywhere we shouldn't be doing when it comes to maybe a ceremony or some kind of semblance of servitude. They're like nothing near the flag for the, you know, missing action or something like that. Let's make sure we do our due diligence and ask them to make sure that we're not doing something that's not appropriate.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Tobias.
Okay. Probably won't be liked on this one, but isn't what the Heroes Memorial Park was signified as is a memorial park? A place for resemblance, a place for solitude, so forth? Am I hearing that there's children that are playing on the water? Am I hearing that there's dogs that are coming out there? And are they using the restroom, urinating on the grass or something like that? I've had conversations with several people already. I actually had a conversation with a veteran about this. I brought this up. They were pretty disheartened that animals and pets were actually at this park because of the fact that it is considered a memorial park. I know federal and state and others have regulations as far as having service animals, which I'm sure will be required. But like I said, I'm trying to understand, again, the full concept of what this memorial park is all about. And also the idea of having children that might be running around, which is fine. I mean, it's a park. But playing or getting into the rocks and water, which is already an accident waiting to happen, a lawsuit waiting to happen. But just... But just the whole respect of it all. Because we put so much time and effort. And so many veterans have put so much time and effort into this. And the millions of dollars that have actually been spent into this. I'm just trying to wrap myself around. I haven't been out there yet since the ceremony. And I know it's supposed to be family-friendly. But I'm trying to look at the respect of it all as far as what this park is really supposed to be about. Because I know in Washington DC, people going to the Unknown Soldier probably don't have pets out there unless they're service animals. So I want to make sure that the city, what is our overall goal for this park and the meaning behind it all? Again, I'm not trying to be against pet owners. That's not what I'm getting at. I'm not trying to be against children going to this place and enjoying themselves with family. I'm just trying to get, make sure that we as citizens understand the true meaning when we go to this place. Because there's going to be times, we've barely have broke ground on it. But there will be times where we will have ceremonies out there for people who have died in the line of duty. There will be ceremonies for veterans who have passed on. So I want to make sure that the place that we have out there is respected on that end going forward. And I think those signs, if it's the will of the city and council to have those animals out there that we, and I know there's very responsible pet owners out there, that we go forth and look at what that whole park's all about. And I think going forward, I know that the citizens going forward will really respect that. Thank you.
Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you. So I'm just speaking for my husband, who is a veteran. He enjoys the park twice a week with our dogs. And the last thing, as I mentioned, I wanted was to have my dog doing his business and me not being able to pick up after him. So we cannot, I believe that we shouldn't be controlling who shows up in there with a dog. I have seen people skateboarding at the park. And I enjoy it because it's their taxes that are paying for this park. It is a memorial and we have beautiful things that are, you know, that we are displaying, showing the respect that we have for our law enforcement and veterans and first responders. I don't believe that that shows any sign of disrespect, but that's just my personal opinion. So I do believe that the other thing is kids are going to be kids. And kids like to get their feet wet in the water when they walk by it, with shoes or without shoes. So another thing that we can control. I'm pretty sure that we will have upset residents if we just restrain kids from jumping in that little section of the water. I think the smart thing to do was at least to let them know that the rocks are slippery. And if you fall, you fall.
That's true. I look at that as well. I know children will be children. And I know people will bring their animals out there. And like I said, there are responsible pet owners out there. Again, that's having a conversation with one person and another person was saying the same thing, another resident that I spoke to. And on the other side, there was other people out there saying, I enjoy bringing my animal out there. I enjoy having it there. What's the problem? What's the issue? If I'm a responsible pet owner, having these items that you're requesting would really help. And I'm full in support of that. And I'm full in support of the signs. It's just, for me, this is how I feel about that park, about the respect of the park, of what it stands for. And I do have faith in our community that they will respect it going forward. And if they are going to have children, they're going to be playing in that water. Or if we're going to establish signs or something like that protecting them, that's where we got to be at on that end.
Mayor Protim.
I just wanted to give, counsel, just a little background on it. Being one of the original task force members, you know, part of the design team. One of the things we did do is make this park to be very interactive. This is a very unique park. Not only is it a memorial, but it's also a park. So the programming was designed to bring families and residents out to learn about our first responders, our veterans, people that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, people who serve as well. So one of the things we do encourage is for families to come out there and be a part of the process and maybe get some more interaction as we move forward as a city. Having more QR codes throughout the park and having more amenities for the kids to research and have maybe even some programming, something we envisioned to make sure that we give people a gist of what it is to serve and making it more interactive where kids can go out there with a QR code and get a touch of history, something we also were looking at. But it's definitely, it's a very unique area. And there are parts of the park that we have to give homage to and have reverence for. And there's parts of the park that we designed to be very active, to make the families come out and be a part of the process, learn more about those people that serve in our communities. So just wanted to give everybody a little brief survey. This is something very different and unique. I've visited several memorials throughout the United States. It's something that I do as a family. Anytime we take a family trip, we make sure that we put some kind of aspect of history in it for our children. We've always done that. And I've visited a lot of memorials. I've been to a lot of historic sites. And this park kind of encompasses all that. Because even when you're in DC and you're at the memorials, there's still a lawn for people to go out and sit around and hang out with their families and their animals as well. So this is something that incorporates everything. And it's a different kind of park. But at the same time, we'll show respect in the areas that we need to show respect and let the kids enjoy a little bit. But yeah, definitely always being safe and allowing our kids to learn more about our histories, what we designed this park for. We want those children to come out and learn about our first responders and our veterans. Thank you.
Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. The subject that Councilmember Tobias brings up was one that I never thought of. Because I think this was always shown to us as just like, you know, a park, park. But he has a valid point. So when I do look up a memorial park, it says the concept of a memorial park is to provide visitors with an atmosphere of natural beauty, peace, for quiet meditation, and a sense of dignity and honor to the memory of the loved ones. And so not until I looked it up right now did I really understand that. And I went to Washington and I saw their memorial park. And for some reason, you just knew that's what that was for, right? So there's not, there wasn't what we have here. And so maybe it was just not a meeting of the minds when we were trying to discuss what it is that this park was going to represent. Because I look, I saw it the way it's been presented and a park running around and pets going on there. But Councilmember Tobias brings up a very valid point. And so I don't know, is it even possible to like make a list of like expectations or rules? Maybe not. I don't know what to say. Like just guidelines, like, you know, please, you know, be quiet. Or I don't know. I don't know what it would be because I'd never thought about the memorial in that aspect. But I think for those who may have the same ideas as Councilmember Tobias, we should take that into consideration and then maybe make up some kind of etiquette for that area. If anybody's interested, I don't know. Again, my dad's a veteran. I grew up right next to Fort Riley, Kansas. I completely understand that in retrospect. Again, in retrospect, I understand that. And so moving forward, I don't know if the city would be interested in creating some kind of etiquette. Like maybe even something like, this is a memorial. If your pet uses a restroom, make sure you pick it up. Something along those lines where maybe at a regular park, if you didn't have that sign to remind you of what it represents, you wouldn't normally just pick it up. And it might encourage other people to do so. Overall, I think it's something that we should think about. And my apologies to anybody who was, who's been offended by that or where there was miscommunication. Because I don't think that was anybody's intent whatsoever. And on a different note, I do want to know, is Parks and Rec taking over this park already?
We are maintaining it on the days that the contractor's not, so yes.
Okay.
And as well as doing the flag retirement reservations.
Okay. I just want to make sure you guys, I want to make sure you guys are prepared to take care of that park. Because I don't think you can do it. My hope was that they could work with you to incorporate exactly. I don't know if like the machine stops working, if you guys know what to do or whatever it takes. I want to make sure you guys are fully informed and to be able to take care of that park. Because I guess, again, in retrospect, what we voted on was for landscaping and not necessarily for maintenance, everyday maintenance. And so Jerry, I just want to make sure that they've somehow worked together so they know the ins and outs. Because I don't know how much work you guys did prior to everything. I think it was, yeah, the whoever's overseeing it. I want to make sure that they're fully apprised and capable because that is an expensive park. And so if we put that much into it, I want to make sure that we're going to, and I know we can maintain it. I don't want to seem ugly or mean, but I just want to reiterate, we've spent a lot of money on this. Our staff deserves to be fully informed and educated. So we can maintain it ourselves going here on out.
The park staff has been on site with the contractor and the landscaper and received several trainings on the equipment. And the park remains under warranty for a full year. And we'll continue to go through trainings and make sure that by the time that warranty is over, we're fully versed in all the mechanics of that park.
Okay. And does Mariana have like a phone number in case there's an emergency and we need to contact?
Do we have staff in the park every day now? We're still waiting training videos, but we do have a phone number that we can reach out to for emergencies. We're getting the numbers as we come.
All right. Thank you.
So one of the things that's coming online as well is the training video. She touched on it. So there'll be videos that they're making on how to work all the equipment as well. So as we get new staff, we can, whenever we get stuck is a big thing, that we always have people that can go out and get informed, watch a video in case there's a question. The other thing is keep in mind, this park was programmed. The entirety of the park, it took a long time to program this park. We programmed the children areas to be away from those areas that you have to be quiet and pay reverence to. So that's something that we did as well as a task force and working with the design team as well. So everything you can think of was thought of. And every question you can think of was probably asked as well early on. And that's something that always going back and reviewing some of the old films when we were, what do you call it, meetings when we were first designing the park would be great. Because we did ask a lot of questions. A lot of the questions, Jerry, today, we asked over and over. And we asked them of our veterans as well because we wanted their input as well. So definitely going back and reviewing some of that would be great. But I can promise you, we did our due diligence on this. Thank you.
May I quickly ask, who's picking up the dog waste right now?
Our staff, unless private residents do on their own.
So all I'm requesting is that maybe we can put two pet waste stations with the little baggies away from the actual memorial, so it doesn't disrupt the architecture of it or it doesn't offend anyone. But we are never going to tell people, hey, don't show up with a dog. Half veterans carry service dogs. So that's all I'm asking for. And putting an extra trash can, which we already have. And just like we have the web park, the web section for kids to climb on, we won't be having somebody watching every kid that goes in there. So if they get in the water, we will know.
Mayor, you've got a question. I'd like to call the vote.
Well, is it okay if I say something?
Oh, yeah.
Just waiting and then I think we'll be done. So I just, I actually kind of want to say that I think that while it feels like there might be conflict, I hear everyone saying the exact same thing. We have a park. We care about it. We want to make sure that it fulfills the goals that we have set up. And the items that are being brought forward by Councilmember Parsley are designed to increase the standard of maintenance, which I think is probably the most, the way that we can show the most respect to the veterans and first responders who are memorialized there. And that's to make sure that the park remains nice. And so I think that's the spirit that this is being brought forward in. And certainly there are questions and concerns that we all have. I've received just an incredible amount of overwhelmingly positive feedback from veterans, first responders, and the community who use that park every day. I see that park every single day. I stop in the parking lot two to three times a week and just watch and observe. So I think the park is functioning exceptionally well. And I do think staff's playing a very important role in filling in between the landscape maintenance job of clean scapes. But while, but doing things like, I've seen, I snapped a picture the other day. I think I sent it to Jerry of one of our staff members wiping off the signs coming in. Those are extra levels of detail and care that are being provided on that park, which is why it still looks tremendous and I think is going to continue to look that way. But certainly unless we were wanting to say no dogs allowed, you know, it makes sense to do the things that are being proposed to me. So those are just my thoughts. But I do think we are all in agreement about wanting to make sure that this park has a high level of care and maintenance to it.
Would you be willing to add some kind of etiquette sign to that as well?
There already are park rules. So I don't remember exactly what the park rules say. But certainly I would be open to having something that says, this is a memorial. Please keep your, you know, animals out of the brushes, you know, the bushes. And also please, you know, on a leash and all those kinds of things would be appropriate for staff to do if they feel they can handle something along those lines. So. All right. Anyone else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. There is a request by staff to postpone Agenda item number 20, and they will bring that back. Are there any objections to that? All right. Next up is Agenda item 21, First Reading and Ordinance Granting a Five-Year Extension to the Franchise Granted by Ordinance 959 and amended by Ordinance 1150 to Pedanalis Electric Cooperative, containing various terms and conditions with regard to the extension of the franchise to construct, maintain, operate, and use a transmission and distribution system in the City of Kyle to provide electric utility service. This item does have a public hearing. Mr. Hendricks.
Do you want to do the public hearing first?
You can present and then I'll do it.
For the record, Jerry Hendricks, interim city manager. This is an ordinance extending the existing franchise agreement with Pedanalis Electric. It carries forward all the elements, including the 5% franchise fee and everything else that was in that existing ordinance. It does give more attention to our ability and the utilities' ability to underground electric lines at our right-of-way. And staff recommends approval.
All right. This item has a public hearing. So if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is now closed. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Floris Cale.
I just have a question. I read this over and over again, and I just, I guess I don't understand it. What happens if this doesn't get approved, I guess, is going to be my question.
Then we continue with the existing agreement till we come to an agreement.
Okay. So we're agreeing to, can I ask Paige, what like, overall, what is this agreement for? Just so we can bury lines?
It serves two purposes. One is to extend the term of the franchise agreement because it is coming upon its expiration date, so we need to extend the term. So that's the first. And then the second is to add a provision for undergrounding of new distribution facilities with some exceptions.
So why do we need a franchise agreement with PEC?
Because state law in your charter require PEC to have a franchise agreement in order to use the public streets and rights of way, public places, to install their facilities.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think that's the case with all utilities that operate in the right-of-way, right? We have to franchise agreements with Frontier and...
Yeah, either that or state law, state law takes it over and has a state law franchise.
Okay. Jerry, can you please elaborate, or Paige, just briefly, on the under grounding provision? And what changes are being proposed there and whether or not that, is that going to have an impact down the road on utilities being under grounded? Or they, you said they will be required now, whereas they weren't before?
There was some under grounding provisions in the existing agreement that just strengthens those provisions that you have to work with our public works department to be able to access the right-of-way and do all the utility locates that are typically required. This is primarily for new construction and as a part of our beautification strategies to keep utility lines underground.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cales. There's discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. All right. Next up is Agenda item 22. I have a conflict and recusal on this, so I'll turn it over to Mayor Protim.
All right. The second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 5.43 acres of land from A Agriculture to RS Retail Services for property located approximately 450 feet north of the intersection of I-35 and O-Bridge Trail in Hayes County, Texas. Sun Village Investments LLC, Z22. Will Atkinson, this is your item.
Thank you. Will Atkinson, Director of Planning for the Record. This is the second read. Counsel, y'all voted five to zero on the 10-18 meeting to recommend approval of this. And again, this is a recommended for the comp plan, and staff has no issues with it. It will go through the I-35 overlay from a building approval process. It'll be adjacent to the vibe trail as well. And so it meets all our requirements and then exceeds some, to be perfectly honest.
Okay. In discussion? Councilmember Tobias?
Mayor Protim, I'd like to go and make a motion to approve, um, agenda item number 22.
Second.
It's approved by councilmember Tobias, second by councilmember Parsley. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing, five zero.
Okay. Next up is agenda item number 23, an ordinance amending chapter 53 of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of, uh, this is second reading, for the purpose of rezoning approximately 9.12 acres of land, uh, to P U D M X D for property located at the northwest corner of North Burleson and Marketplace Avenue in Hayes County, Texas. Uh, and then do we have the development agreement with this item as well?
It was, uh, actually approved at the last meeting.
Okay. All right. Mr. Atkins.
Uh, Will Atkinson for the record, Director of Planning. So this is the second read of the zoning request. Um, at the last meeting, uh, city council, y'all had a three items that you wanted to see added to the PUD. And so, uh, we coordinated with a developer and they have done that. And I can just give them to you here real quick. Uh, y'all wanted to see more appropriate safety features for pedestrians at the public park that's adjacent to the traffic circle on Marketplace. Uh, soundproofing of buildings, uh, adjacent to the U P R R tracks, so their entire project, if you will. And then include activated gathering areas adjacent to the fence separating U P R R from the final project. Um, we don't have exact details of that at this time, but we will determine those at the time of site development permit as a standard detail in the plan set as well. And then they included, we included those items in the PUD requirements for the synopsis and also as part of the concept plan on page 16 of the PUD as well.
Okay. Does anybody, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, and one last thing, if y'all are wanting to, to hear from the applicant is here, they can, they have an updated presentation as well.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Yeah, I want to say, um, thank you for taking into consideration everything that we wanted as a council and, and taking that feedback collectively and incorporating it. Um, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by councilman Floris Cale, second by the, uh, Mayor Protim. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Thank y'all. All right. Next up is agenda item 24, an ordinance amending chapter 53. Uh, this is first reading of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 7.17 acres of land from agriculture to community commercial for property located at lot two, block A of the Finley subdivision in Hayes County, Texas. That's on Stagecoach. Uh, this item has a public hearing. It was left open at the last, uh, meeting. Do you have anything to, uh, present?
I do, and I can go ahead and do that if you'd like. Uh, this is a CC zoning district, a request for the lot two of the Finley subdivision, as stated. And, um, the reason why staff worked with the developer to request this zoning is because it is a step down from the standard highway commercial, which is at the hard intersection. So it's more restrictive and the use is allowed. And also it's more robust from a site development permit standpoint, uh, to the point to where staff was very comfortable with asking them for straight zoning or instead of going through a, a, an alternative route as a P U D, a planned unit development. Uh, some of the big items, the big ticket items on this, um, they have to have adjacent to the residential, which is the Sage Hollow to the north and Mr. Frankie's property to the south, a minimum of a 15-foot landscape buffer plus, um, solid, uh, privacy fencing. In addition to all the tree protection ordinances they have to account for with chapter 54. And we are also coordinating with the, uh, the, um, the applicant as well to make sure that we're preserving the historic well on site for the Stagecoach, um, historic route through there. And they're ecstatic about doing that. So, uh, we are very excited to, to bring this forward. And as a side note, we would like to say that, um, due to the proximity of the existing, uh, car wash and the, uh, gas station being constructed next door, they will not be able to also do the same thing. So, um, they are, th- this project moving forward, assuming the vote is, is, is a yes, is, uh, going to be very good for this portion of the community. And they will also have to do a conditional use permit for the buildings.
Okay. This item has a public hearing, and so if there are no objections, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mayor Protim.
Well, I just want to thank you for, uh, ranging a meeting with the developer, the owner of the property. And, uh, it was very informative. I appreciate all your support as well. I'm very excited about, um, us having that protection for the historic well. Uh, the idea of having the trail running right by it so that way people can come out and, and see the hit wells, uh, as well is important for me because, uh, I was really worried about people, the well being preserved and then nobody being able to go over there and actually enjoy it. But I love that the developer even was thinking about putting some seating around there so people come out and, and just sit around and enjoy the well. This is a part of our history of our city of Kyle and, uh, even before we were a city. And we were just a stagecoach line back in the day. So it's very important to see this preservation and I, I'm, I'm really excited about this. So thank you for your help and I want to thank the owner for being so amenable to, uh, working with us to preserve this.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Tobias.
Yes. Um, I may have asked this the last, uh, meeting, but it was a five-one vote again on the P N Z. Do you know what was the concern? I think the other one I may have addressed on the three-one the last time, but on the five-one vote, I just, uh, what was the concern that the person had? Uh, the commissioner had?
I'm going to have to go from memory and I apologize.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
I do believe, and Sarah later on can absolutely tell me if I'm wrong. I, I think she has some concerns about some of the uses allowed in close proximity to the residential. And we do know that the developer is going to be, um, limiting the, where they can put the, the drive-throughs um, that will be allowed in the, um, on portions of the property. They can't be within so many linear feet from residential.
Okay. I think I did see the meeting where she may have, was bringing that up about, does this fit the comprehension plan for this type of area, this type of development? Whereas insofar as she may have had a question, so I was wondering if that was it. It may have been.
It may have been, um, but from a comprehensive plan perspective, this works. And also from a built environment perspective, it's a good transition step down, um, from the higher density or higher intensity uses right at the hard corner and also from the, to the adjacent to the residential.
Okay.
Yeah. This, this, uh, commercial zoning district from a point of sale retail perspective is actually one of staff's go-to.
Wow, good.
If we can make it work. So.
Oh, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Parsley.
So I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So they could put a fast food restaurant with drive-through in here.
They could. So when we had initially coordinated with the applicant, um, the idea, the, what's, what has become the, the idea of fast food restaurants wasn't known to staff at that time. And so what they are pursuing, um, if they, they are allowed to do within certain limitations per the, uh, the code in the CC. So that has to be, it's limited to a certain area of the property as far away as you can essentially from the residential.
And we don't have any, anything in, in terms of plans of what they want to do in there yet, correct? I didn't see anything.
Because of straight zoning, we can't really talk about their site development permit. They have submitted one, but we haven't processed it yet because the zoning has not gone through yet. So.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protim?
Okay. Just want to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve, consider agenda item 25.
24.
24.
Wait, 24, sorry.
All right. Second, uh, motion by Mayor Protim, second by mayor that we approved agenda item 24. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Floris Cale.
I'm hesitant. Um, so they're just doing a straight rezone. There's no, so they're not asking for incentives, so there's no development agreement?
No, ma'am.
And so we have, oh, that's a slippery slope, especially knowing that there's going to, you could put things in there that I don't think will fit that area. So when you do that big, what my concern is, when you just do a big rezone like that, does everything that I could, that fits into that category, and this is what we have to assume as council, does everything, is that best fit for that area, right? Going through my head in my Rolodex, it worries me that if I say yes, that something may come along that I don't think is a good fit.
So I can, I can provide per the code, um, what it uses are allowed in the CC. And it's specific uses. So you can have a bed and breakfast up to five rooms, retail, general, so point of sale retail, uh, restaurant, religious assembly, art gallery, childcare center with an outdoor playground if, uh, they chose, so choose to do so. You can have a fire, a police station, a professional office, a funeral home, a barber slash beauty shop, a convenience, a grocery store, a fuel station, but there's, um, in this case, they can't do it. Um, nursing, retirement homes, a veterinarian without outdoor boarding, a health and fitness, fitness center, and a restaurant with drive-through and then a financial, financial institution with, with drive-through banking. Now, drive-throughs, further on in the list, they, uh, they cannot be located within 75 feet of a residentially zoned property. So if we're looking at that parcel, that severely limits it from a practical perspective to the, uh, the southeast portion of the property up against, um, Old Stagecoach Road and the adjacent convenience at the hard corner. So there's going to be a.
Right now, this is just zone ag. Is that right?
Correct.
Oh, geez.
And so, um, they're going to, they'll be able to have a row of buildings between the drive-through areas and the rest of the property. And then on top of that, there's going to be a significant amount of landscape buffering on top of what they already have to do for landscaping and tree protection.
So they're definitely limited because of the size of land and because of all the, um, safeguards we have in place as well. I, I definitely, um, went, met with the developer and, and saw what they have more or less coming forward. And, uh, I have no problem voting for this. I know that he's not looking at doing something hard in there so that would, uh, really disturb anybody in, in those areas. And there's a lot of safeguards in place as well. So, um, I definitely have, uh, I, I think it's a great development. I, I'm glad that he was willing to, uh, meet with us and probably put those worst fears to, to bed, worst case scenarios. Uh, so, uh, this is just only today. We still have the opportunity when he comes forward with the site, uh, development to, uh, um, to critique it a little bit more if we want.
Well, I would say, if, if may I say, I don't have the, the knowledge you have and I don't know what's going to come in here. So as of right now, this is a no for me.
Okay. Well, one, one thing to consider here, the, the knowledge, we're supposed to be making a zoning based on the use. So it, should it be, uh, this is seven acres. So, uh, they have a right to, to develop. Should it be, uh, commercial, construction manufacturing? No. Should it be warehouse? No. Should it be multifamily? Uh, would be the other, uh, uh, the most likely appropriate use there. Should it be single family, which you can't do on seven acres? Uh, and should it be retail? Well, retail has a lot of allowable uses and no protection for residents. So as it relates to the comprehensive plan, the community commercial zoning, the reason that Will is saying that it's the go-to is because it is the absolute bull's eye from a land use standpoint for what is appropriate next to a regional node like that intersection. So any, any planner is going to look at the zoning and at some point you have to rely on your code uh, to dictate how development can happen as opposed to spot zoning, which is, uh, which is essentially saying that you have to show me what you're going to build before we say yes, which is against the law unless it's being developed through a development agreement, which oftentimes bypasses the zoning. So a community commercial zoning is the appropriate zoning for properties that are next to a regional node along an arterial regional street. So I would assume that if you're not going to vote for a community commercial, I can't imagine this council would want to vote yes to any other zoning category. They wouldn't vote yes for retail. You probably wouldn't vote yes for multifamily. And so what, what would you vote yes to?
Well, my concern is that Mayor Pretend said, you know, his fears got put, you know, basically to sleep when he talked to the developer. I haven't talked to the developer, so I really don't know what's coming. And I am, I really have fears of seeing a drive-through, just like what happened with Taco Bell. So I, I would like to have more knowledge. Um, maybe it needs to stay agriculture. I don't know.
Uh, my concern is, uh, from that list that you read me, there might be one or two that I think are sufficient or, or for that area. Now, you don't, Mayor Mitchell doesn't believe retail is good. I would probably be a little more satisfied with retail than I would, than this commercial one. And so.
Community commercial, I'm sorry to interrupt. The community commercial is a, is a less, is a more restrictive zoning. Retail is more.
I totally understand that, but he just read to me some of those options. And when he did that, there were several that I was like, I don't think that's best use. I don't think that's best use. I don't, so, so in that I found more that there were not, in, in my opinion, best use. Now, we all have several different ideas of what best use is. And where I am trying to follow your lead, Will. Um, but with that said, that, I'm trying to think of that area. I, I.
So for me, I'm thinking about the area. I'm thinking about the well and the preservation. If you put something bigger in there, you're not going to preserve that well. They're going to try and develop the entire acreage. Right now for me, it's preserving a piece of history for Kyle. And with the limited space they have, they're going to limit the amount of what they put in there. But if you're looking for a bigger commercial, you're going to get rid of the well. You're going to get rid of that historic area.
Well, I mean, I don't think you're going to get big commercial because it's only seven acres. But, um, I would hope anybody that we stick over there, seeing as it's going to be a rezone, would have to come to the council and at least discuss that well with us. Um, I don't think we're, I don't think they're saying, hey, this is what it has to be. Because at the end of the day, rezoning is up to council. So if they want to come and they want to offer whatever it is they want to offer and we don't agree with it, we have a right to say no. We could say no. Now, I'm not going to try to strong arm them and tell them this is what it has to be. I can say, hey, I don't think that's best use. And I don't have to give you an explanation. We are to be nice, to try to help the developer, or I am, to make sure they understand my concerns. As of right now, those things that you listed really worry me. So I don't, do, do we want to try to table this or postpone it and then come back? Or are we ready just to vote right now?
Uh, if, if.
You know, you know, for me, I think, I think we're ready to vote. We postponed this already. The developer had, gave y'all opportunity to reach out to him, meet with him. Uh, I met with him, uh, so I think I'm good with moving forward with this. I think it's a great development. I think it's a great way of preserving our history. I, I think it's, uh, really what, you know, we're just working on the zoning. He still has to come back with a plan. We have to approve the plan as well. So there's still another chance for us.
I don't think we have to approve that plan.
On the, on the plan that he's coming forward with. Craig, is he going to submit it?
So the site development permit, um, if it's compliant from a zoning perspective, it's approved administratively. Correct by staff. So, um, because, and I'll restate it again. Because the, the standards in this community commercial zoning district are so robust, far above the retail services um, that's adjacent to it. Um, staff is very comfortable being able to essentially put our code to the test to make sure that they're, they're being fully compliant and then some. So.
Okay.
I just have one suggestion, if you don't mind. Um, maybe we can look at, when we're doing the site maps, if we can actually have a real Google image of, of, um, developments or actually approvals that we have. I guess for some of us, where we, we see the drawings and then we see the, I guess, the satellite image, but actually the, a, a real-time kind of photograph. So we actually know where the location is, if there's any obstructions like big wire towers and things like that to where we say, oh, wait a minute, kind of, uh, railroad tracks or something like that. Or there's down fences or something like that. Um, because I, I know where this is at, but I know some of the other, other council members are still confused on the location. But if we could maybe look at that as something going forward, when we do these, uh, um, rezonings, we have actual, a real Google image kind of deal on that. That, that's, that's what I guess.
Okay.
Now, one final thing is this is first reading. So there would be, if it passes, it has to come back for second reading. There would be an opportunity to have a conversation with the developer. I'm sure the developer would be happy to. Uh, if it fails, then it's just gone and they can't, they can't reapply for 12 months. All right. Roll call vote.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Floris Cale?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Tobias?
C.
All right. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
The developers listening.
Yeah, I would like him if I can.
You might want to, I don't, I don't know if the developer's here. Is the developer? Yeah. Well, we just passed it. So if the developer's listening, you might want to reach out to some of the council.
I did have a meeting scheduled with him, but then I also had a meeting earlier that day. So just overbooking.
Understood. All right. Next up is agenda item number 25. Amend the policy on appointments for city boards, committees and commissions to exempt the economic development and tourism board from the current policy. I know we're talking boards and commissions. It, it wasn't my desire to bring this back. However, uh, when we, uh, made our original appointments at, on draft day recently, uh, we skipped the economic development board. And the problem with that and then our current path, uh, is that the terms have expired, uh, and we have not reappointed. And so their, the, uh, their board is technically defunct right now. And so it, it was my desire to allow for the economic development board to, uh, follow their current policy as well as memorialize that as we, uh, develop a new policy. But in order to do that and in order for, uh, the director to bring forward the nominations, uh, that, uh, she would like, uh, we need to, uh, make a vote to exempt them from the current policy. that she would like, we need to make a vote to exempt them from the current policy. Now, I know there can be lots of discussion about exactly how the board has been configured through the years. My hope is that, is that we can allow for ourselves to just allow for Victoria to bring forward the nominees that she has, including the reappointments, so that the board can be reconstituted and that we could make contributions and suggestions for amendment and drafting of a new policy as we move forward past the election in our regular process. But it's just a situation where they won't be able to have a quorum if we don't, if we don't make an exemption for them at this point in time. Does anybody have any questions? Councilor Floris Kael.
I don't want to make an exemption, per se. I would be willing, if we can, to extend it. Can we extend it by months or something short-term to help them get their quorum? I think this takes a much longer conversation because I do not want to see it different from the current policy. I think all these boards are equally important, and I know economic development also has the same kind of setup as P&amp;Z where you can't, you're limited by who can be on there, and same as art commission. So thinking long-term, I would like it to all kind of be uniform, but I do understand the situation. So I don't know if there's something that we can do temporarily to let them, allow them to meet. I guess one of my concerns is we've never really worked with them collectively, so I don't know, I know P&amp;Z's been short a couple times, and they haven't been, they haven't been able to meet quorum, but for this, I feel like we, I don't know how much input we get from them that we should have to make an immediate change and exclude them, really when I feel like they all should be included. So if there is something that we can do to meet in the middle, so we can temporarily allow them to meet and make decisions, I would appreciate that.
Victoria Barcas, Director of Economic Development, for the record. So it's very important that- The board starts meeting now, and because they want to be very involved in the comp plan. And already next week, we're working with Will and his team to have the, the firm come to our ED&amp;T board meeting and get feedback from them. And we have two really good applicants that are waiting to be appointed. We've interviewed them, our, our board chair and vice chair and myself have interviewed these applicants, and I've, I have their bios if you'd like to read them. I can send them on to council, but everybody on the board is supportive of these two applicants. And our fear is that they will lose interest in wanting to serve on the board because they will be, they were here a few, I think last month, you know, to, to get reappointed and also to get appointed. They waited online, so if I can share any information on them, if you'd like to speak to them, I think they're available to answer any questions from you in person. But whatever your direction is, I'll, I'll take. I just don't want to lose interest of, of the two applicants that we have and then those that want to be reappointed.
Well, my hope is that we never lose that interest. I hope they're understanding of our situation. I think our policy, I'm sorry, somebody was rolling their eyes. Further policy, it's changed, and we realize that it's not something that is fit for us. So if they could give us a little bit of grace as far as trying to figure ourselves out, and if you would be amenable, so we could do something in order to allow you guys the opportunity to work with the comprehensive plan during the time, I would be willing to do that. Okay.
Is there other discussion on this item?
So what exactly are we asking for? Just wavering for temporary till we come back with a plan?
They had applicants that came forward as a part of our draft day process. We chose not to move forward at that time. The conversation was that the economic development board at that time is constituted differently, which it is. You're not required to be a resident of the city, for one example, and there, there are others. That board is constituted based on industry segments and is very targeted and has always been managed by the economic development department pretty much exclusively. So that's the way it's operated for as long as I've been here. So the desire was to exempt them from the policy, allow them to bring forward the applicants that they already had brought forward before, so that we could put them on the board so that they won't be defunct, and then we can address making any issues, making any changes to the policy that we want to make moving forward as we consider updating the current policy. So that's, that's my recommendation. I'm trying to, I'm trying to resolve an issue, and right now, we're in a situation where I think it might take us some time, but this would resolve their conflict. And again, we, they did come forward in draft day. They're not proposing to make any changes to their nominations. We didn't consider them at that time. We moved on. So I'm just trying to fix that particular issue so that we can move forward. But in order to do that, in order for Victoria to bring forward the nominees that were already being presented, we just have to grant them the ability to have an exception from our current policy that's, that's, that we've said we want to address, but we're just not ready to yet.
Okay.
And then she would bring them forward at the next meeting with all the resumes and the bios and allow for us to discuss with the applicants at that time.
So making them exempt right now will be just for them to come forward and for us to appoint them. However, whenever we do the policy amendment and we bring the task force, we can bring this back.
That is correct.
Okay. Then I-
Wait, can I make sure we're not nominating anybody long-term? This is just gonna be temporary? I think that's what the question was.
I would assume for the term, whatever term that it's already established.
A two-year term.
It will make sense.
Yes.
Okay.
And then bringing the policy forward, and one of the things I'd like to see in the policy is waiting till we get our new city manager to make sure he's a part of the process as well, would be something that I would recommend, because I'd love to see what our new city manager's input would be as well. I know it's, economic development was the steering force for this for years, but you know, as we move forward with city manager, we don't know what his goals will be or his vision. So I definitely want to make sure that we give him that ability as well, so making sure we're moving forward with the plan once we appoint a new, once we hire a new city manager is all I'm concerned about.
Councilor Tobias.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I know we, we are proposing a special meeting for November the 10th, not to add anymore to the agenda item, but would this be something that you would want to be able to bring on the agenda, and we can be able to look at that and vote?
When is the meeting?
November 10th is on a Thursday.
It's on November the 9th. It's on Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Just, if not, maybe the next meeting. I see there's a sense of urgency.
Right.
Which is obviously there because of what you're stating about we might lose interest. So I'm just trying to look at the next scheduled meeting, if it's, if it's maybe a 10, 20-minute conversation, and we've already reviewed the applicants. If that's the case, if we decide to go with this, then we can make the decision then, and then that way, they could be up and running at least by December if, if everything goes okay.
The, the plan was to bring them on the 15th. If they're meeting on the 9th, then we, then putting them with the special meeting, I don't think would change anything. There's no meeting between the 10th and the 15th, is there?
Uh, no, not in economic development.
It would be my recommendation just to bring them forward in the regular agenda.
That's fine. This is just a suggestion.
Yeah, that was a good one. I'd like to make a motion to amend the policy on appointments for city boards, committees,